Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the mayor and council meeting, March 7th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February 26, 2024 sunshine notice was sent to the record of the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Councilman Deluiseo.
Here.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski.
Here. Everybody please stand and split the flag. Right. Next, we have approval of minutes, January 18th and February 8th, regular and closed session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilman Deluiseo.
Yes, on January 18th and abstain on February 8th on both.
Councilwoman Homan.
I follow Councilman Deluiseo, yes, for the first, and I abstain on February 8th.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Abstain on the 18th, yes.
Do we have the poll? What do we got?
You're... I'm abstaining on the 18th. You're abstaining on the 18th?
We were on the 18th. We were there for the 18th.
Yeah, we were here for that.
So we weren't here for the...
All right, so we have the poll.
The 18th?
The 18th, we should be okay.
And the 8th, because it's only he and I on the 8th that were gone.
Okay.
We need three affirmative.
So Councilman O'Connell was, would abstain anyway. Councilman O'Toole abstained, and Councilman Yakarino was abstaining. So then the other three would be...
Thank you.
So I abstain on the 18th, yes to the 8th, so.
Sorry.
Councilman Yakarino.
Abstain on the 18th, yes on the meeting.
Okay.
We're good. All right. So today we have two presentations. We have a proclamation for Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month, and we have also a proclamation for Ted and Karen Clark. So Council President Homan is going to read the first proclamation.
Previous Council President Homan.
I'm sorry.
We are now Council President, Mr. O'Toole.
I'll just further down.
Proclamation for Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas colorectal cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in the United States among men and women combined. And whereas colorectal cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening, but one in three eligible Americans are not up to date on screening. Whereas colorectal cancer is estimated to be the number one cancer killer for those ages 20 to 49 by 2030. And whereas black Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer and about 40% more likely to die from the disease than other groups. And whereas colorectal cancer is expected to account for 11% of cancer deaths among Hispanic men and 9% of cancer deaths for Hispanic women. And whereas screening colonoscopy rates have still not returned to pre-COVID-19 levels. And whereas the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely colorectal cancer screening rates to 80% in every community for all Americans eligible for screening. And whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. Now and therefore, we, the mayor and council of the Borough of Allendale, hereby proclaim March 2024 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in the Borough of Allendale, signed by Mayor Amy Wazinski.
Thank you very much. And our second proclamation is for Ted and Karen Clark. Ted and Karen Clark have been residents of Allendale for, actually since the 90s, the early 90s. They're actually being honored tonight by the Saddle River Allendale Rotary, so we are very happy to be able to read this proclamation in honor of them. Whereas Ted and Karen Clark have lived in town since Memorial Day weekend of 1990. And whereas Ted and Karen have three kids, Matt, born in 1990, Chris, born in 1994, and Mary Hope, born in 1998, who have grown up in the AVAC building, riding their walkers and down the driveway before they could even walk. And whereas in 1991, Ted joined the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps, followed by Karen a year later. Whereas as members of the Allendale Ambulance Corps, Ted has served as captain and president while Karen has served as secretary. Whereas beyond their dedication to AVAC, Karen and Ted have served as leaders and first aid merit badge counselors with Allendale Girl and Boy Scouts. And whereas they have been involved for many years at Guardian Angel Church, both as a catechist and Ted as a youth music minister. And whereas for 13 years, they ran Guardian Angel Church's annual Festival of Lights with a great success. Now therefore, I, Mayor Amy Wazinski, on behalf of the government body and the residents of the Borough of Allendale, hereby acknowledge with great gratitude Ted and Karen Clark's dedicated service to the Borough of Allendale. Woo-hoo!
Thank you. Well deserved.
I don't be able to present them, but then later hopefully. So, okay, so I am going to do a quick agenda review. It is a light agenda today. We have our second reading of ordinance 24-03, and Chief Dillon will speak to that when we go to vote. And then we have our consent agenda, our consent agenda, or matters that are considered routine. But I do like to point out some of them that highlight some of the great work that we've all been doing. We have one that is actually just a routine tax adjustment. We have authorizing some emergency budget appropriations. We do this every year where we take some from one ordinance and move it to another. We have authorization for the blue ribbons for the Colon Cancer Awareness Month, which is the proclamation that we just read. So you'll be seeing blue ribbons on our trees downtown. We have our list of bills that I reviewed and Councilwoman Lovasolo reviewed. And we have a very small change order in our community center, which is just a little cabinet and shell adjustment. And so let's go back now up, and do we have opened the meeting to the public? Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on the agenda items? Not seeing anybody? Let's bring it back. So second reading of ordinance 24-03. This is, was first read on February 22nd, and it was posted, and now this will be second reading and adoption. Linda, will you please read ordinance 24-03?
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on February 22nd, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 24-03, an ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter 26, 26-31D of the Borough Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Chief Dillon, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a slight adjustment to an existing ordinance that codifies a, basically a procedure for outside employment of police officers. Very frequently, schools or outside vendors may employ police officers on their days off, and this encourages Allendale officers to work those extra details. It's always better to have an Allendale officer dealing with our residents directly.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'd like to open this to the public. Does anybody from the public have any comments on ordinance 24-03? Sure, please come up.
I'm sorry.
You have to come up and state your name and, yes, no problem. Your name and your address, please.
I, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not a resident of Allendale. My daughter's in the Allendale Scout Troop, so I don't know if I'm authorized to speak. Just for her understanding, we'd like to understand what changes 24-03 promulgates.
Okay, so first, if you don't mind, your name and your address for the record, and then I will have Chief Dillon address your question.
Okay, Jonathan Eisenhagen to Nolan Court in Waldwick.
Perfect.
Sir, how are you?
Excellent. Thank you. Yourself?
Thank you for asking me the question. So we currently have an ordinance where police officers can be hired on their days off to provide security at our schools or at facilities that may have like a known threat or such. Up until today, when we're approving this change order or resolution, they were, there was no limit to amount of hours. So no minimum amount of hours. Basically, we were saying that if you hired a police officer, you would be then only, there would be no minimum four hours a minute. Like, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I back up a little bit. So if you hire police officers, a minimum of four hours. And what happens is the other police departments in the area had that minimum, and we do not. So my officers were hesitant to take those jobs because there was no minimum. So, but we would hire an outside department that would come in, and there would be a minimum amount of hours. So I just struck the number of hours from the ordinance.
Okay, so it's more permissive now. It's, you do not have the, 2403 strikes the four-hour minimum, making it easier to hire the Allendale police.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's probably a better way to explain.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it was just a slight tweak to make it more...
One sentence we just changed.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Walter first. We have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 24-03.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Deluiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Homan. Councilman Deluiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next, we have our council reports. Councilman Yakarino.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things which I'd like to update as we've all been involved with. For our joint insurance fund, also known as JIF, there are certain cyber requirements in which they ask us to uphold each year. There's a questionnaire that comes to the borough, making sure that we're adhering to certain standards and minimum security levels and so forth. So one of the big updates, which has been recommended by our risk manager and also in line with standard operating procedures, is moving our email system to the cloud. So previously, we had run it on an in-house physical server, and now the entire email system of the borough is in the secure, what's called Government Continuity Cloud. So we are fully JIF compliant now with our email and two FA multi-factor authentication requirements. So that will help us maintain a high standard, which will help with, God forbid, there's a cyber incident, our deductible remains relatively low. So that's one thing that they had asked, or recommended we do.
And I really just want to commend you on all the work you've done on this, and this is something that is very serious. We've had neighboring towns where their servers have gotten hijacked, and they've had to pay a ransom of upwards of half a million dollars. So this is a very big progressive move on the borough, so thank you for leading that.
Happy to help. And then in addition to there being security enhancements, this will also help collaborative efforts within the borough.
Absolutely.
So we're working on that. So again, the email was the first phase of the project, so to speak, so we're going to be moving forward with more communication integrations and so forth. Secondly, also another JIF recommendation is to secure our server environment, so we'll be looking at different areas within Borough Hall to lock down some more equipment and to further be JIF compliant. Moving on to facilities, the concession stand continues to move along. We're working on a survey with our borough engineer, which we approved this week, so that'll be moving forward. As such, with the survey, we can look to formally approve Phase 2 and 3 from our professional service architect at the next meeting I'm anticipating. And furthermore to that, the temporary electric service will be going up at Crestwood Lake tomorrow as we move forward with the demolition of the existing structure. And finally, starting next week, the motor vehicle mobile unit will be coming to town at the firehouse. I know that many residents in town signed up. John, I think, sent the newsletter at 6 o'clock on Monday, and by 7 o'clock, it was filled up. So we've had a lot of folks coming to us asking, when are they coming back? So tentatively, September 10th and 11th, they will be returning to Allendale. I've had a very good working relationship with the rep at Motor Vehicle so far, so he's been very happy working with us. So I'm anticipating that there is much more to come as the state continues to mandate the real IDs. So if you do not have a real ID appointment, you could still turn an old license plate, duplicate title. They did tell me if there are any cancellations for next week, that we can put it out there and fill up those spots. So she would probably let me know that tomorrow or Monday, and I think I'll leave it at that for tonight.
That's great, Tyler. Again, thank you so much. Who knew that would be so popular? I think people just have that fear of going down to the...
Yep, so we're just happy to continue to offer these services.
Yeah.
So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes, thank you, Tyler. Thank you for reading everything I wrote for you about the IT. So the land use committee has not met since my last report. We have a meeting coming up in two weeks. And the finance committee hasn't met either, so there's no updates on those two. But that doesn't mean that we aren't working on components of all of, from those committees. It doesn't mean we're not looking at the budget and still discussing the capital budget. And we also had a meeting the other morning discussing outdoor dining as the weather is getting nicer and making it easier for our restaurants in town to accommodate all of our residents who love to eat outside. So we're working on getting a packet together to explain it to them, and that is forthcoming. Our green team had a meeting tonight, so I missed that one because I'm here. But they were discussing things about the upcoming Environmental Spring Cleaning Day, which is April 27th. April 27th is also our history day, where the John Fell House in Allendale partners with nine other historical homes, the Mawa Museum, the Zabriskie House, what have you, for a day of learning about history and for, it used to be $10, I'm not sure it's still $10. I guess you access to all the different sites for that day, one-time ticket price. The library has some upcoming programs. Every Saturday in March, in partnership with the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps, I don't know if you were going to talk about this too, they're holding a family and friends CPR course. This is non-certification program, and it's offered at either 11:00 or 1:00 PM and will last for about one hour. In addition, they have some kids programs coming up. Their very popular Slime Time is on March 18th, Musical Munchkins on March 19th, Jiggly Wiggly on March 26th, and they're also offering drop-in after-school crafts tomorrow and March 22nd. And then their adult programs in March include a college funding workshop that I noticed the mayor put on her Facebook page on March 11th, and the start of a three-part memoir writing class on March 18th. A complete list of programs is available on the Lee Memorial Library website. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilman Homan.
Oh, well, I am giving sort of sub-report under our chair, Joe. So what I'd like to share is just that we've met as a sewer team to discuss items that we needed to put together as a group of Allendale individuals on the council, along with Andy and our engineer, as well as legal, prior to beginning to work with Ramsey on renegotiating the new sewer agreement with Ramsey. And we've also been having discussions with Veolia on the permanent water treatment that is planned for Allendale. It's awesome that we have the temporary in, and actually, the first granular activated carbon change is going on at the New Street Plant. But obviously, we have to look ahead to permanent treatment. So again, it's great that Veolia owns the system and they're managing it, but we will be discussing with them the plans for the permitting on where this facility will be. We're anticipating it will stay in the building that is down by the current DPW, the current, the old water building. But we have a meeting tomorrow morning, so it'll be excellent information that I'll keep everybody up to date on the council. Perfect.
Thank you so much. Councilman Deluiseo.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's been a little while since I've been here. Everybody doesn't remember him, Joe Deluiseo. I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Homan for your efforts on the sewer and the water. I'm really interested in learning more about it. I know I'm new to the whole thing. But I do want to say, you know, I'm very thankful, Mayor, for being able to chair the DPW committee. I think I told you the one reason and the only reason I ran to be a councilman was to help my community and the residents and do good things for the community. And this gives me the opportunity to do that. Not that the land use committee didn't, but I think this is...
You did great things there.
You know, this is, this is really a pleasure. And working with our new superintendent, Andy Guglielro, it's a pleasure. So just briefly, we meet regularly every Friday.
Yeah.
We talk about everything. You know, Andy's been great. Any issues that come up, we talk throughout the week. But he's, he's been on top of everything. There's really been very little that he's had issue-wise as far as, you know, needing my input. But he's been great about communication. The guys have been doing a great job. They've been cleaning up the DPW facilities, which were pretty, in pretty bad shape. I know they're still working on it, but they're doing a good job of getting there. Andy's been really addressing a lot of the residents' needs and concerns. Pothole repairs. I know we hired a company, tried them out. We did some pothole repairs on McAtire, Oakwood, Chesswood, Myrtle, and Linda. And from what I understand, they're, they're holding up pretty good. It's a new company. We're going to give them a try and see how they do. We had some snow events, right? You know, Andy and our DPW guys did a great job on the parts that they had to work on, our subcontractor conquest. I think they did a much better job this time. I know it took a little bit of effort and a little bit of communication to make sure that they addressed some of the issues that they missed the last time, and I think they, they accomplished that. So it's moving in the right direction. We did discuss some potential dates to do another topsoil and potential woodchip giveaway. We have big piles of these materials down at the DPW facility to kind of take over from what Councilman O'Connell did last year. We're going to open up some dates after our contractor, Jay Fletcher Kramer, gets his equipment and his stuff out of the area. We'll clean it up, and then we'll do some announcements. John Gill did some announcements. We'll pick some dates and let the residents come down and have some topsoil and some woodchips. We have a little bit of news staff-wise. We had a retirement. Ray Frazier has announced his retirement. And we have one resignation. Dan Richards resigned, so we'll be losing those two guys. And I know Andy's going to be doing some advertising to get some potential replacements. And I know he's, Andy's got his committee report that he's going to talk about, but I know they're working on preparing Crestwood Lake for the summer and also getting the ball fields ready for the baseball and softball season coming up.
Love it.
So I appreciate, it's been, it's been a lot of fun, so I appreciate the opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council President, Matt O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee will be meeting this coming Tuesday. Work has commenced on the Firehouse bathroom. Recall that this project is to make the bathroom ADA compliant. And while there's been a couple of challenges along the way, things are progressing. In addition to the CPR class, AVAC has their Casino Night fundraiser coming up on Friday, the 24th, at Ramsey Country Club. Tickets online at allendaleambulance.org. Congratulations to our newest graduates of the 5th grade lead program. The lead program is an important part of the Police Department Community Engagement Program and is spearheaded by, of course, Sergeant Azvedo, who does everything with the kids in this town. Continuing the department's community outreach, Allendale Police will be hosting an FBI class designed for the public to teach you how to react to an active assailant in a public space on March 26th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. It will be held here at Borough Chamber, Council Chambers, and there will be a daytime program available to businesses. This is being run by Tim LaTurner, who used to be an officer in town and went to the FBI, and now he is doing these kind of things. And finally, of course, the JIF. I am too.
Oh, I was hoping I could sign up and beat all your, you know, beat all you guys up. I've got some leverage.
The Gary Lattesi Memorial Blood Drive will be taking place at the end of this month, on the 28th, from 1:00 to 7:00 at the Firehouse. So far, we have 18 appointments filled. We have a lot more to go, so everyone come on out.
Excellent. Wait, remind me that date again?
28th, Thursday, the 28th, 1:00 to 7:00 at the Firehouse.
Matt, do you need an appointment, or can you show up?
You can just show up. Yeah, walk-ins are welcome.
Okay, perfect. All right, now we have our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Compost permits can be purchased starting Wednesday, March 13th, online through our website for Allendale residents only. The compost site opens April 6th through December 7th, Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Wednesdays from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Also, if you miss the Free Rabies Clinic in Allendale, an upcoming Free Rabies Clinic will be held on Saturday, March 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the DPW Garage, 475 West Main Street in Whitecloth. The Municipal Clerks Association contacted the clerks today to encourage us to join the New Jersey League of Municipalities webinar on Oprah Reform, since the Oprah Bill is moving fast, to hear about the Oprah and the changes that are coming. It is scheduled to be considered by the Senate Budget and Appropriations Committee on Monday, March 11. The League supports this legislation as it gives greater discretion to records custodians regarding duplicate and anonymous requests, encourages that documents be placed online, and provides funding to facilities to facilitate that goal. Prohibits records requests made by data brokers who take the information for commercial purposes, increases the membership of the Government Records Council, establishes a police record access improvement task force, and implements recommendations from the Privacy Study Commission to provide privacy protections for our residents. The Assembly counterpart A-4045 has been introduced and referred to the Assembly State and Local Government Committee. The League is supportive of these events, efforts to modernize a more than two-decade-old records law. And that's it.
That is really good news, because it's such a burden, especially on small municipalities like us. And as you said, there are so many people who are taking advantage of it, and it's not really the intended purpose of it initially. It's not being carried out, so.
Right, right.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, Chief, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies in advance for the length of this, but I would like to take this opportunity to update the mayor and council on Chestnut Street. Since I became chief in January 2022, the Allendale Police Department has focused our attention on Chestnut Street, giving us one-quarter-mile-long street more time and effort than any other street in the borough. In addition to continued enforcement, the following actions have been completed in response to resident Mr. Joseph Delbono's complaints. Added additional impact signage, such as strictly enforced and radar enforced, including replacement of faded signs and change requested by Mr. Delbono to switch to conforming signs to the equally conforming signs of a red circle and hash through a truck legend. New striping, including roadway center markings in a crosswalk at Franklin Turnpike. New striping includes glass beads to make the paint more reflective. Collaborations with New Jersey Transit for right-of-way maintenance, including pothole repair, repairs to rubber pads in between tracks, fogline striping across the track area, and confirmation of inactive bus stops on Franklin Turnpike. This also includes relentless follow-up to ensure repairs are made. Trimming of foliage alongside roadway. Bergen County Sheriff's Office Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Team was on, was requested to be on a street to perform focus enforcement of overweight trucks. A focus enforcement task force will be on Chestnut Street starting on or about the third week of March. Requested Orange and Rockland install upgraded streetlights. Collaboration with Walder PD to ensure both departments aren't simultaneously conducting stationary radar enforcement on Chestnut and Hopper Avenue. Listed Chestnut Street on approved grant application for distracted driving enforcement. To educate Allendale officers to detect abnormal conditions at the Chestnut Street grade crossing, Sergeant Daniel Rosendahl and Traffic Officer Mark Dunn were both sent to Rutgers for three days, January 30th to February 1st, 2024, to attend the Federal Railroad Administration Grade Crossing Safety Seminar and Conference. Bergen County Sheriff's Traffic Officer was sent to monitor an intersection to evaluate visibility and lighting. He has requested to see day and night traffic crash data, which is being provided. Note, there is no crash history for left turn from Franklin Turnpike northbound onto Chestnut Street. Public Works Superintendent was briefed on the history of the street. He advises he will handle obtaining the striping asked for as part of a pavement improvement project this summer. In conclusion, prior to my tenure as chief, an electronic speed sign was in...
In conclusion, prior to my tenure as chief, an electronic speed sign was installed on Chestnut Street. A speed hump was also planned for installation, but Mr. Delbono disagreed with the location of the device. The location of the device was determined to be in compliance with M U T C D guidelines. In the past, Mr. Delbono has asked that someone be an advocate for Chestnut Street. Based on the aforementioned actions, the Allendale Police and the borough of Allendale has been and continues to be staunch advocates for public safety, not only on Chestnut, but all the other approximately one hundred and thirty-five other streets in town.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Good job.
We are very appreciative of all that you do, not just for Chestnut Street, but all the other streets. You guys are the traffic experts. You go to the schooling and everything for that. So we take your recommendations, and as much as some people feel like they might know more than you, we do appreciate your professional expertise, and we will always rely on you and your, and your, you and as well as your staff. So thank you very much. D P W Superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor.
Andy.
Just a quick couple of things. I see we made it through another weather event. This time it was rain, not snow. D P W's been filling potholes, like Councilman Deloissio said. We're getting ready for the upcoming season at Crestwood Lake, and we're also getting ready for the baseball and softball season. Just out of my realm, but just a quick safety note, this coming weekend, on the tenth, we go forward with time clocks. And just to remind all residents to change all their batteries in the smoke detectors. And that's it. Respectfully, smooth.
Thank you. All right, excellent. All right, so we have our.
I'm sorry, I forgot something. Can I add something?
Of course.
I just want to thank the mayor and council and Allison for the decision of adding the new locks to the borough department doors.
Ah, yeah.
And also, thank you to the D P W as well for putting those in. I love that idea, so.
Excellent. So T J With, I think your report was covered by.
Yeah, most I was just going to update on Oprah, so you covered most of it. There's a bunch, a whole bunch of other things in the bill too, to stop harassment, email addresses, personal phone numbers. So I, I think they're really trying to take seriously some of the concerns I know that Allendale has had in the past, which obviously this governing body has supported the privacy of their residents. And it's refreshing to see that there's going to be some reform. So we'll stay tuned. I know there, there's a lot to go to get us across the finish line, but, you know, I'm glad that you took the class and hopefully there'll be some reforms.
Yeah, it is. It is really about time. So we always felt very uncomfortable sometimes on what we had to give out, and every time we tried to fight it, we lost. So it's, it's about time.
And Mayor, just to add, this Saturday is the Northwest Bergen Council Members Association, and this is one of the topics of discussion.
Oh, super. All right. I will give my mayor's report. Two ten West Crescent, if anybody's driven by, you'll see that all the walls are up on the gym side. And we will have a steel signing next week, so it's kind of like a ribbon cutting or like a groundbreaking, but it's a steel signing. We have actually our first of a series of town halls scheduled for March twenty seventh. That meeting, we're going to be reviewing Allendale's goals and strategies. We plan on sending out a short survey to all the residents, asking them what they want to hear on the three other town halls that we have planned. So they'll have the opportunity to express what you'd like to talk, and we will actually create the agenda around that. I have a mayor's meeting this Saturday, and we are going to be continuing the deer discussion. So we have Rep. Josh Gottheimer, who's going to be there, so it looks like maybe the deer discussion is going to become a little bit serious. So I will report back on when I have that, so I'm looking forward to hearing and, and coming up with a plan that's going to be comprehensive with all the towns versus us trying to do something. I'm also going to be attending a breakfast meeting on the twelfth with the New Jersey mayors. We are actually going to be talking about the fair share housing crisis, and I do call it a crisis because there is this new bill out there that does not look like it's going to give any relief to Allendale or any other towns in New Jersey. All you have to do is drive around and you can see the massive building that's going up. And all you have to do is drive around on a rainy day and see all the flooding that's going up. And it's not, to me, a coincidence that, that you are hands in hand. So again, power and number, so I really look forward to this meeting. It's actually my first of the League of Municipality Mayor's meeting, so I really look forward to getting some great information, and we'll, we'll report back on that as well. Last meeting, we discussed the sewer agreement that Councilwoman Homan worked on so very hard between Saddle River and Allendale with some of their development that was for fair share housing. Now we have another one coming up. There's another two hundred and seventy-five units going in Saddle River, right on Borough Line Road in that office complex. So here we are again, and coming up with agreement, and we have to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do to, to support our sewer system and the Allendale residents. Both of these developments are literally on the border of, of, of Allendale, so we will have the impact of them, probably more than actually Saddle River was, was. So again, congratulations to all the leads kids. I happened to be able to attend the graduation with Councilwoman Lovasolo. It was super. They just did such a great job. It was really just a wonderful program, just talking about giving kids a voice. If they see bullying, to stand up, saying no to drugs. I mean, the whole entire thing was positive. When you're feeling anxiety, what to do, who to go to. So just a great program for the fifth graders. So really, I'm happy to be a part of that, and thanks to Officer Ace and again, Chief Dylan.
The kids sure do love Officer Ace. Sergeant Ace.
Sergeant Ace, yeah, Sergeant Ace. We met with Neglia this week, so we will be working on our next two phases of our streetscape. So our next one is going to be on Jimmy Curio Drive, and then the other phase is going to be behind our town clock on Central Ave that's going along by our train, train station. Thank you. We also had two new businesses, two ribbon cuttings in town, so we welcome Bergen Pediatric Dentistry, as well as Philly Pencil. They're both in the Acne Center, so we always really want to support our local establishments, as well as Councilwoman Lovasolo mentioned, we are working on our outdoor dining. Outdoor dining has become so successful, one of the positive things that came out of COVID. So we want to make sure that we, the residents want it, and then we accommodate it. And, and the weather is going to be taking a turn for the, for the better. And the mural, so the mural is still going on. Hillside students have had a wonderful experience being part of the mural, being part of Allendale history. I saw some videos of the kids, and it was unbelievable. So we have a dedicated Instagram page. We have some space on our website talking about it. And we will be promoting it and also supporting it and coming out with more fundraisers. And so we will pass along those dates when we have them. And that is it for me. So. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business? I'd like to open up the meeting to the public. Any public have any comments on any matter? Is that a yes?
You don't have to. He looks like he's like, yeah, sure.
You can take the night off. We'll be here in two weeks.
I'm noticing more than anything, Walter Woodman, Thirty-Eight Hamilton. Recently in the Town Journal, they seem to make an issue out of each of the schools having an armed police officer in the building. And I realize this is completely helps there. What the hell are they doing there? Why'd they make an issue out of an armed police officer? We have one there now anyway, wandering through the building.
Yeah.
I assume he's armed.
Yes, there are actually retired officers that the schools have hired in light of some of the incidents that have gone around in the country. So I don't think it's an issue. I think it's just something that is being proactive in light of the safety of our students. And we actually, they're hired through our police officer, but the schools actually paid for that. That was their decision to hire them, and they paid for it, but we just actually facilitated through our police officers. Do you have anything to add, Chief Dylan?
So, no, it's a good point. I read that article as well. I, I understood it to be just a difference of opinion on how that program should be rolled out. Here in Allendale, we have three officers who are retired, and they're also cross-trained as school resource officers. So that, basically what that means is they could take educational records and have access to them and then mesh them with law enforcement records. So it's a higher level of service, more than just security.
You like it?
I love it. I think it's probably the most successful program we've ever rolled out. I'm not just saying that because I'm the police chief, but. I do have kids in this district too.
I, I will say, as a parent, having a daughter in eighth grade, I'm thankful for those officers being there. God forbid, there is a problem. At least they're there.
They're very.
They're very professional. They're very friendly.
Very dedicated to our children. I mean, they come from different backgrounds, very busy departments, but, so this is definitely a change for them, but they assimilated perfectly.
And that's what I mean. So it's more than just in an emergency. To me, they're, they are, they, they're a face of the police community that makes it approachable and seen.
It's actually part of our community engagement, because obviously they are dressed just like police officers. You don't know that they've had a twenty-five, thirty-year career, and they're now having their second career, and they're just part of our department, and they're under our.
Yeah, it, it humanizes the police officers with the kids, has them, have them talk to the kids and make the kids not to be intimidated by police officers too, right?
Absolutely. And as you progress through our school district, they're all, they're all uniform, exactly the same. So the kids get used to their presence, they get used to their interaction, and hopefully when they do graduate and they have interaction with the rest of us, that it's always in a positive light.
Right. I love that. That's perfect. All right. Anybody else in the public wish to speak? Not seeing anybody? Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.